Joseph, what's up Joseph? Old, bold and brash. Guess what I'm wearing? What's that? I got the T-shirt. It's part of my newest uh product line. Alright. So today what I wanted to do is I wanted to work on a little bit analysis. I want to do uh the numerical stuff that I was doing before, but I'm not ready to do that yet. Not willing to, I guess more more is a better way of describing that. Not willing to because I have, I think the last time I did numerical analysis. Uh I got stuck on something involving like the Python program. Like it was not getting the outputs that I was um expecting. And I just, I just don't wanna deal with it yet. I was like prolonging it, I guess. So today I'm gonna do something else, but I will eventually get back to that stuff. So I wanted to get back on or I wanted to look over some stuff in analysis. Let's see. Where is it at? This guy. So something about this integral. And I wasn't much sure. What is it? This guy, the integral of a simple function. Basically this. The heck is that? Button mash. Is that a Twitch emote? Hmm doesn't register for me. Limited time only emo, what? Oh, Hive Train? Oh, is it like, does it expire? Limited time only. That's such a good emote. Holy shit. Some of the Hive Train Emotes are so good and some of them are just really bad. Every few months, interesting. Wait, do all Hive Train Emotes expire like that? I was hoping some of them I would have forever. What the heck? If I don't have some of them forever, then I'm gonna be so sad. I spent two whole dollars on some of those. Oh, there's a set each season. What? It says they're yours forever. Uh, wait a minute. Before we say hello to the new High Train Emotes, we must say goodbye to the old High Train Emotes. They start a hype train and get them before they ride off into the sunset. The all new uh category collection drops May second. By the way, if you already unlocked the old emotes, they're yours forever. Is this only for the old? Huh? At the time of the of refresh, previous participants will get to keep all emotes they've collected from previous trains. They do refresh them, but I think you can keep them? But this has limited time on yours. Whatever, if mine expire, whatever. But no, not whatever. If they expire, I'm less likely to do hype trains again. No, I'm less likely, yeah. Oh no. That sucks. Which ones do I want to stay forever? There are a few that I want. I want like this one, this one. This one. And so these are the ones that I wanna keep forever. So they're not, some of them are not that great, but like I would like to keep these out of the ones I have so far. That sucks. I feel like I've had some of these for a while though. Maybe it just hasn't expired. I know, huh? I was like so happy when I got this. So happy. I like the touch of salt and late save and because like they're kinda like niche, but like they could be really good in specific cases. And then the the it's always nice to have like a a lurk emo slash a peeking out. Oh, you get to keep them if they're before May second. Yeah, I think some of these were before May second. I don't remember when I got some of these. They might all be from before, actually. Oh, that sucks. The button mash is so good, man. That is a great emote. Which reminds me, I need to like get emotes. I was like, one of the main reasons why I wanted to get um the the um affiliate for my Twitch was because I want emotes that I like, I want control over emotes that I can use, you know? It's part of the reason why I sub to some people like like for specifically for the emotes. I never watch Ru, but I I have a subscription with them, so I can use all of their their emotes, you know? These are some sick emotes. And they have a lot, like especially channels that have a lot of emotes. Even better, it's like worth, it's even more worth the cost. Yeah, you gave me shit last time when I said I didn't know who Ru was. I don't know why I don't know what who Ru is. I just maybe like, I'm in a different sphere, you know? But yeah, I want I want to add emotes to my channel eventually. It's really gonna depend on whether my girlfriend has time or is willing to do it. And uh if not, then I will probably hand that task to somebody else. I definitely will actually, cuz I really want emotes on my channel. And the only one I have is this one. Which was given to me for free by Twitch. Hey, what's up, Jack? I also want to eventually do a counter for first. I'm gonna try to like implement that pretty soon, probably sometime either a week or two from now. Uh I'm just a little too lazy to kinda like figure out the like how to put that together. Cuz it needs to count for specific viewers, right? Like it's easy to make accounting uh put apply accounting bot, but like to count specific, to count accumulations of counts for different viewers is something that I haven't seen. Or I think I have seen it. I I just too, I just don't wanna ask, you know, for people who have seen it. Or have used it. Smitty wherever man Jinxen, Jagger man Jinxen, yeah, exactly. I was gonna add a a sound bit from that episode too. I don't know if I did already. A friend got stickers on Fiverr. I think it was sixty for twelve and two animated. Yeah, that's that's kinda like typically the the price range, just like from forty to sixty. Yeah, there is a first redeem. There's a bunch of redeems. I don't know if you've noticed. I've added some last stream. The first I've added a while, um but like before I I took a break. Um but we also have the bonk. You know, we have other things. Uh you triggered my trap card. And we also had to have some some uh SpongeBob ones, you know? Especially Squidward. I got this redeem for one you're playing um Pokemon Unite. Yeah, I I I have a whole bunch. I'm gonna add like more and cycle them out, like some, I'm gonna cycle some out. Or maybe I'll just add more cuz I could add a lot. I still wanna be full of redeems, like I don't wanna be cluttered. I also got this. I think this is good too. The loser call from SpongeBob. I realized late that you can't get channel points at all um on all the channels you watch. Yeah, I actually kind of realized that recently, not recently, but probably like within the last two or three months or two months. Um I don't know. I it's cuz I was under the impression as all that as long as you are like you have the tab open and mute through the tab, not through the the browse like the 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 player that you can redeem points or you can like like um you can passively get points. But I've noticed that I don't get um those large and like those large channel points that supposed to occur like every fifteen minutes or so. Which was kinda lame. The loser one is gold. Yeah, exactly. There are some other channels that like that I I sometimes watch Pokemon Unite for and like they sometimes say they call uh they sometimes use the word loser and I just want, I just wanna push that redeem, bro. I want to put, I wanna use that that blurb, but I can't. Two channels at a time, I see. That makes sense now. That cuz actually that makes a hundred percent sense because I only get two at a time. I kinda roughly knew it was around two. But I wasn't a hundred percent sure. I thought like it was glitching on my end. Interesting. That is very interesting. Okay, good thing to know. Joseph, you uh if you want uh if you I guess this is gonna be a good loser emote. Oh, the red flag. Is it the red flag? Yeah, I never got that one. I've tried getting that. If you want it's up to you, Joseph. If you want, cuz I feel like you've been like actively like trying to support and stuff like that and you even got people to like um look for my channel, like the the math community. I give you the the uh the VIP. Or if you want, you can just try to get the hundred bits or the hundred channel points, hundred thousand. Up to you. I'll make this uh I'll make the exception. Yes, a free VIP. Plan press. I might get, I might make other people VIP too cuz I think I I realize I have more than I expected. Uh let's see. Yeah, they even got that. They specifically got the first batch because they wanted to uh increase the rate, right, Joseph? You're, I noticed that. By the way, I don't know if I said thank you for for the sub. Like I I don't notice these things cuz my alerts, they're not sound based and like when I'm in the middle of a game or something, I I'll I won't be looking at the screen. I should probably make them sound based, at least the followers and the uh and the sub alerts. There you go. Hey Luna, how are you? I was thinking about it though. I've been thinking about it even before I I did the uh uh before I took a break. Got some stuff I gotta do for work. See y'all later. Alright, Jack. Take care. Took some time to organize my stuff. Hope your day is going well. My day is going well, better than yesterday. Those three hours, those two, one hour of sleep did not make that that day very good for me. That day was uh obviously the the Unite games were kind of not very good, but the rest of the day was just torture trying to stay awake. Yeah, I only had one hour of sleep. It's my fault though, like sometimes I can't help myself when I, when certain people are like streaming. It's just, I can't help myself. It's a, it's a bad uh it's a bad habit of mine. But I also couldn't sleep, so it was just kinda like I might as well watch something. The Pepe mug? This is from uh uh one of the streams I watch. I even have the emote. There, there was a different one that I wanted, but it didn't have. I think it was um I think it was which one was it? It wasn't the giggle. I think it was this one. Yeah, it was either that one or something else. I don't remember at the time what I was thinking. But I wanted or this one too. If this was a mug, I would, I would have loved that. Okay. The kiss one, yeah. It comes in handy every now and then, to be honest. Obviously, I don't use that like cringe in a cringe away, but it does come in handy in in specific cases. Okay, so what am I doing here? Alright, right, the the simple function stuff. I wanted to compare it to this book. Because it seems to go about it differently. Wait a minute. Okay, I need to like change the boundary. Close. Close. Zoom. How's it look? Oh, it's too big. Okay, what was I doing? Okay, so if in case it's not, in case anyone's curious. I'm looking through this uh definition of integration uh for with respect to a measure. And um the definition depends on this lower Lebesgue sum. Which is dependent on the infimum of the function. And that seems to be um it looks at least the setup looks different from from what I've seen from other textbooks, like the the Rudein textbook is a little bit different. I need to re-center my stuff. Give me a second cuz this is like, the half the page is like on the on the left. Holy moly. Yeah, not like this. There you go. So the Rudein book basically defines it in terms of simple functions first. Hey, what's, how's it going, Justin? So we start with simple functions. Which eventually you have to do no matter what, and then it defines the integral in terms of in terms of the measure and the distinct values of s in in the simple function. Okay, what's going on here? Hold on, give me a second. I'm gonna open the other book, the Roidin book. So I don't know if I made this statement before, but the Roidin book is in my opinion awful to read. Not to read, but awful to look at. Like it's not obvious where anything is. Like I can't even, if I were just looking at this page, I won't even notice that this proposition is here because the 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 ba- the bolding of the of this is like almost the same as the the normal text. Like it's not clear what is like what is text to like kind of like supplement the definitions and and the theory? And what is like, what is definitions and what is a theorem? Like where are these like? Hey, look at this, man. Can you tell there's a corollary here? I mean, maybe if you look for like the 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 proof indicators. Um but I'm not readily looking at these things. Like this is so hard to read. They didn't have a proper editor, it seems like. Yeah, it's just, it looks like it's just LaTeX, like it's just full on LaTeX and um kind of unfortunate that's, I I know like when I use LaTeX, if I bold things, it's like, it looks like this. It's like not very like obviously bolded compared to like the regular, the regular um the regular font. But yeah, this needs, this book, I think this book from what I've seen looks really, really good. It just needs to be re um it just needs to be edited so that things are a little bit more easier to find. The format is kinda weird, right? I know, right? Look at the difference between this book and this book, like it's so obvious where everything is. Like the proposition is obvious, like you can tell that this is not like a part of a proposition or a part of a a definition or theorem because of the the indenting. Right? This is just like, this is just, the author is kind of like dialogue. Like this is good format. Eh? Wait a minute. What's going on here? Why is it indented? Am I playing tricks on me? Okay, now I'm not sure anymore. But in comparison, there's the book that I use, which But in comparison, there's the book that I use, which you guys can see here. This is clear. It is clear what the definitions and the, the theorems are. The blue is the theorem. The yellow is the definitions and everything else is kind of like. Um, dialogue or. Or example. Examples are kind of like in, in between these um. Separation lines. Yeah, human editor, yeah, that's true. So, yeah, I, I want to use the Royden book so bad. Because it's like another book that, that's commonly, it's like commonly used in, in like measure theory and integration. And um functional analysis, but it's like. It's like so hard to read this. It's so hard. I mean, I could, I could read it like a book. And I could like, if I wanted to, I can, I can, I can go through this book and, and reformat it in my own way. It's just gonna require so much effort. So. Yeah, the reason why I opened this book is because I did look at the definition for integration in this book. And I did compare it to the book on the right, which is the Axler book. That's the book that I used when I took this class. The big measurable functions. Here we go, Lebesgue integration. Okay, review of the Riemann integral and then the integral of a bounded finite supported measurable function. Okay, let. I should, I always forget what this Greek letter is. Is this a, is this psi? Oh my gosh, I should know this. This is like commonly used in quantum mechanics too. I should know this Greek letter. Be a finitely supported simple function. It's psi, right? It's because I haven't done quantum mechanics in a long, a long time. Like I, as, and so I don't really like use this one a lot. I'd be a finally supported simple function, then integral of psi over E. Is defined as follows. If psi is identically zero, define this integral to be zero, and otherwise let uh lambda one to lambda n be a finite number of non-zero functional values. Taken by psi and define the integral to be the sum. And so, look, this is, this is like, this definition is. Um, defined in terms of the simple function, right? It looks like the simple function. You remember psi because of psychology? They, they use it? Really? Interesting. Um, and so this, this definition looks, it looks like. Um, it looks like this. Oh, or actu- actually, it looks like. Maybe more specific. I mean. It looks like this. The integral of uh psi. A D. A DM. Is equal to this, or these are the values of uh, of psi. But that's not. It's, so this is, this is what's happening here. It looks like they're defining it in terms of the simple function as opposed to. As opposed to the. Uh, what the heck? As opposed to the Axler definition, which is in terms of the infimum. I'm muted and lurk. Sounds good, Justin. So, that's the, that's kind of like. The issue that I'm trying to resolve. I'm trying to resolve this issue with the uh. This definition. Now, you can approximate functions using simple functions. I already know this. Actually, I think I could find that approximation somewhere. It's has to be here somewhere. Did I pass it? No, this is. Huh? I think it's Igorov. I think that's the one that uses it. Where is Igorov? This is Igorov. No, it's not Igorov, huh? Approximation by simple functions. There it is. So this is the tip, this is typically the way to, to approximate. Um. The function. Using simple functions. And so there's like a bunch of like, this theorem is basically talking about like. The, the characteristics of the simple function that you can use to approximate it. So maybe, maybe it's related to the, so I might need this. So let's take a look. So I'm, I'm gonna work on this for just a little bit. I might not even finish it, but I do want to think about it for a bit. And then after I will continue with the cope game. Well, loss of generality. But why? Why what? Why continue playing your game? Okay, so what was the issue here? The issue was. The issue here was. Okay, the issue here was some of these are, can repeat. I think that's the issue that I had here. Alright, it doesn't tell you that these are distinct. Okay, I need to resolve. This is what I want to resolve. So that's um. I guess let's take a snapshot. This is section B. Uh, integration, so I kind of did work on it. Okay. F here. What is that emote? Frankers? You don't know? Okay, um. I have here. Did I, did I think about this correctly when I did this? This is applying the definition of the Lebesgue, the lower Lebesgue sum. This is the infimum of the sum. Okay. Yeah, I feel like this, I feel like this argument is correct. Because they're, they're uh, these are disjoint sets, right? EK is a disjoint set, so um. Wait, did I, did I index this wrong? I think I did. Huh? Oh, no, I didn't. I didn't. I did not index that wrong. I don't understand Twitch emotes. You don't need to. You don't need to understand these emotes. That one, I actually don't know when, I don't know when to use that one either. Yeah, some of them I don't know when they, when they are appropriate. But. Yeah, it's a Minecraft emo. Some of the Twitch emotes are like from, from games. Like. Let's, let's see, like, like, like this one. Yeah, okay. Okay, I need to think about this. I think I'm like a little too loose with this argument. Wait, did I actually finish this? Hmm. Did I finish this? No, I didn't. I think I need to work something out here. Uh, did I? No, wait, did I? Oh, this is not even for this proof. This is like something else. Yeah, this is for something else. Okay, um. I was trying to resolve the bottom part two. But this wasn't the issue I was having. Was it the other theorem? Let's see, what was the other theorem? No, I don't think it was this one either. I think it was this. Yeah, so. We're specifically taking the infimum out of. The infimum, because we're counting, so the sa- the sum is counting on the index J, and so we're talking, we're talking about the infimum for EJ. And EJ is a disjoint set. Uh, it's disjoint from all the other Es. The set Es. It's a, and then I think they're, they're picked so that they contain. No, 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 no. I don't think they're picked that way. I need to look at the, the book again. What does it say? Piece of partition uh on X. Yeah, I don't think, yeah, this is, I think this, that's the issue that. Yeah, I don't think. Yeah, this is. I think this that's the issue that I was having. The E's are not specifically picked. So that they contain. Um, the constants. So that they contain the constants like um individually. It there's it's just a partition. I think that's the issue that I was having. Because you can you can because there there. There are N. Uh, there are N Cs. And constants. They're finite constants. And so like. You can construct disjoint sets to contain uh each one of them separately. But I think you can also create this. You could definitely create disjoint sets so to create more than one of them, to contain more than one of them. And so like basically what I'm saying here is that um. Alright, we have our Cs. So if we have like, let's say we have these four Cs, like we have C one, C two, C three, C four. Um. Wait a minute. What was I doing here? Am I thinking about this correctly? Partition. Okay. F is equal to. Okay, so. C K is either. In E K or it's not in E K. So X so E K is a partition. E K is a partition of X. So it should have. Oh my gosh. So what this means? Let's let's put these pieces together. So we have a measure space of X. Um. F is some set from X two. Um. I think zero to infinity, if I remember correctly. Let me double check. Yeah, so when we're talking about this, we're talking about X F being a function from X to infinity. Um. So. Since um since 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 since. Since uh a since E one to E N is an S partition of X. Then C K must be contained in some E. Because of this definition here. Uh, C K. Yeah, C K must be. Contained in some. I'm saying this wrong. So the assumption here is that. X is a subset of R. X is a subset of R. And so. We have a function. Whose output who has finite outputs because it's a simple function. And so there are. There are elements in X to that map to C K. Um. So there exists an element in X that maps to C K. And from there. Uh, there exists. An element. X in the big X. Such that. F of X is equal to. C K. Uh, then since. E one. E N. An S partition. Of X. There exist. And E K. Such that. Uh, X is in E K. I think this is the reasoning for this. And then this was this is what basically. Um, gives you this simple function definition. In terms of the sum. So you can define it this way. Hmm. Right, because if this is true, if this is true, then. Then we can. Then this definition makes sense. Because this definition is basically. So if we remember correctly. This one was. E sub K. Um. Is equal to one. It's equal to one if um. We're gonna call it. So one and zero. And this depends on an element in in C. Um, E sub K. So it's X in C E sub K. If X is in E sub K. And um. X in E sub K. And X not in E sub K. This is the definition for um. For this function. What? No app do you use? I lowkey wanna buy Nebo since it's a handwriting to text generally works for math equations. Um, I'm using I'm using uh Goodnotes. I don't think it says. Oh yeah, it says it right here. The app is called Goodnotes. Just the one on the left. Um, the only downside is that it's a subscription. It's a subscription app now. It used to not be subscription. It was a flat cost. It used to cost ten dollars, which I think was worth it. It was worth. It's definitely worth spending ten dollars on a note-taking app that is really good. But now it's subscription based. I don't think it says it here. At least as far as I I think, yeah. I got an email one day saying that there's gonna be subscription now and and. I was like, whatever. I I write all my notes on this app. It's ten a year now? Oh, is it per year? Is that with a subscription? I thought it was ten a month. That's kind of not good, actually, when I when I think about it. What made me? Why? Why did I think ten a month and think that that's still good? There's also notability. Um, this is like the. A comparable one to Goodnotes. Uh, it works just as well. This is actually the one that my girlfriend uses when she takes notes. So. And from what I can tell, it's pretty good. It's it's just as good as as Goodnotes. But I think this might be subscription two. Let me see. I don't know. I'm not gonna. Not gonna try. I think these note apps are just. A lot of things are to turn into subscription plans now. Like it's just a huge. Um. Shame that things like this are happening, but I think people are just trying to make money, right? So like. And the developers are like. To be fair, they're actively working on it on their on their products. So like, it makes sense from that standpoint to like. Charge. Nine dollars a year for all platforms, six a year for if Android and Windows only and. Twenty nine ninety nine one time for Apple. One time for Apple twenty nine ninety nine? What the heck? I might as well just get that. I need to like. Okay, my subscription I think just renewed like a month or two ago, so. Maybe I should just look at it now. I'm saying like, oh, maybe I should just do it later, but when later happens, it's gonna renew and it's like, what's the point at that point? Um. Subscriptions. Yeah, you see it's night. Holy moly. See all plans. Huh? It doesn't even give me that. They're like, this guy already bought it for one. This guy's a sucker. Just. Just let him. Just let him pay for it every time. If these are same, these are the same plans. Huh? I either can pay nine dollars a year for Good Note six or pay nine dollars a year for Good Note six or pay nine dollars a year for Good Note six. This is a this is literally a meme. I'm going to post this somewhere. Yeah, it renewed September third. So yeah, it just renewed for me. I can't believe this. Why did? Are you? Oh my gosh. Hey, let me take this one instead. Oh my God, it's the same plan, huh? Okay. I need to look at that again later and like. Figure that out because that. That is stupid. Okay. Yeah, it's good notes. It's a it's a good app in my opinion. It got it's it's gotten better, like a lot better. Like, I'll show you some of the features. Um, if you click on the color. You can change. You can change the color. You can add colors. Um. You can. If you touch on the pen. You can change the type of pen that you use. You got brush pen, ball ball uh ball pen, a fountain pen. Um. I use brush pen because it makes my handwriting look the best. The other two, my handwriting looks atrocious. That's another thing. Um, this app. Sometimes it'll make your handwriting look worse than it actually is. Like if I write on paper, it's not as ugly. Like if I write on paper with ballpoint pen with an actual ballpoint pen. It won't look as bad as it does when I write here. Let me show you what it looks like. You see that? Oh, that's a gross writing. Like, look at this thing right here. And then this. And look at the period here. It just looks ugly. Um, it might be better on notability. But that's the reason why I've used brush pen. Fountain pen. Fountain pen works just like fountain pens. Like it has like a. Uh, you know how fountain pens have like a flat edge and stuff like that? Like a flatness to them. So like if you were to write. Zoom in. It's not showing the way I was expecting. I don't know. It's serotype myself. Yeah, I know. It's ha it's awful. Why isn't it showing the flatness? Yeah, this is kinda what I was talking about right here. Okay, that's what I'm, that's what I meant to show, let me see if I can increase the size. Or I don't know if you can see it. It's hard to see, I don't know why it's so hard to see. Basically, if you, if you just pick a point, I don't know if you can see, I'm trying to zoom in as far as I can, if you, if you just. Like, just put a dot, it's not a dot, it's like a line, that makes sense. Yeah. You have this eraser, the erasers you can change as well, like you can change how big it is. Um, you can use precision eraser, which is like just to erase, like, just a small section. Like this. Um, standard eraser, like the only difference, it even shows you what it does, like it erases, it erases strokes. So I use stroke eraser. They just added this pencil feature. Which is kinda neat in my opinion. Um, if you like, wanna draw something. The highlighting feature is, is kinda cool, the only sad thing is, um, if you highlight over the same thing, it. They like double colors this, the region, which is, I kinda don't like that. Um, there's something that I wanna show that I really liked. How do I show it? Oh, this, you can choose the thickness of the line. But if you click on the line itself again, you can actually choose to do dashes and dots. I just found that out recently, this is pretty cool to like a cool thing that you can implement when you do your notes, you know? That's awesome. Notability bin had, okay, okay, notability is better. I literally talked about that, I didn't even say it was better, I saw, I said it was the same, I'm not even saying which one's better. Um, and then you have this ruler. As this ruler is pretty cool too. You wanna draw straight edges, like you don't even have to draw on the ruler, I mean, like on the edge, like as long as you are near the ruler or on the ruler. It will draw the line, you know? And then one of my favorite things on this is the laser, the laser is really cool. Um, this is a. This is what I use when I wanna like, point at things and when I explain stuff to people. Probably can do mechanics piece, that's better now. Did you take your mechanics exam by the way, like, was that last week? I, I think you said your exam was coming up? Yep, last Tuesday, how did you feel, how did you feel like you did? Oh, yeah. Um. Are you here, Leona? Are you gonna, are you, are you still gonna work on the, the, the badges? Or the emojis? Cuz if not, I'm gonna delegate that to somebody else. Okay, okay, I'm just making sure. If you don't, I mean, if you don't have time or you don't really want to, that's, I mean, it's not a big deal, but I wanted to get these. I prefer that, I do have a preference, but. Yeah, well, I'm planning on streaming for like the next year at, at the minimum, even when I'm over there, even when I'm there, I'm gonna stream. I prefer you do them. But it's not a big deal if you, if you don't want to, if you can't. A ninety six point five percent because instead of using GeForce. I argue that we should assume that GeForce doesn't exist. Well, ninety six point five is good, that's awesome. Interesting assumption. That's, that's great, you said, you, you said you weren't feeling really good about that exam. See, always, you know. She got, you just gotta work at it. It's a, the, are you, is that assumption just based on, um. General relativity, is that what you're trying to do? Is that the? Is that what you're implying, or is there some other hidden joke that I don't see or? Interpretation? I like my argument here. Okay, so I think this is, I think this is good, this is good enough. I think this is good, this, I don't know what I was doing here, I had an idea and I was like, wait a minute. My calculator died during the part, that part of the exam, so I was too lazy to do manual arithmetic, I see. Wait, you use a, do you use a, a uh T I eighty four? Oh, Casio, aw, you're a Casio user. The T I eighty four has like a battery, uh, has a rechargeable uh battery, and so like I thought, I thought uh. It costs fifty better than T I eighty five. The, the eighty four has a rechargeable option, and like, I've seen people like who are about to take their exams. And realize that their, their um eighty four is not charged. That's a rip, rip exam. Okay. I, I think this is good reasoning for this, and then if that's the case. Then, um. Okay. That's that part, now, I think it's still true. I think it's still true that there can be two real numbers in the same E. Or is that not true? Can you have two numbers in the same E? Two numbers on the same E. I think it is true, and here's why I think it's true. Here's why I think it is true. If I draw a, what the heck? What happened to my? Oh, I'm in fountain pen. If I draw a, let's, let's just draw like a simple. Um. Range domain, uh, a range domain picture. So there are. So there are these values. Which we call C one. C three, C four, okay, and then there are. There are elements in X, so this is X. This is basically. Um. Zero to infinity, so obviously we can consider infinity, but I'm gonna like. Not worry about that because that's not really that much of a big deal. Um. So there are elements in X which are real numbers. And so. The idea here is. That they map to some specific C value. But some of them can repeat. To the same C value, cuz it's a finite, it's a finite output. Uh, a finite set of output of values. And so. We can have this one also go to C two, and so. And then we also partition X with a finite, um. Set of sets, specifically N of them, and so. Um. What ha, what can happen here is we can get these guys, so this could, this is an example of a partition, right? We can partition it like this. One, two, three, four, five, I think there was the same number as um the outputs, you can partition it like this, and this is basically showing that. Um. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, there you go, here, this is literally what I was talking about. We can see that E, E four. Oh, what the heck? What the heck, what's going on here? This is E one. E two. E three. And E four, and we can see E four. Has two outputs. Well, not two outputs, it has more than two, but like the specific example that I'm looking at is like the. These two elements, these two elements are outputs of E four. And so. Is this not a big deal? And then the same, the same output can occur in different sets. C one occurs in E one, E two, and E three. Okay, that, that was what's tripping me up when I, when I was first looking at this. Okay, so when we are talking about the lower Lebesgue sum, is that resolved? So we have to say that the lower Lebesgue sum of this F just equals to the sum of each one. Of each C K times the measure of E K. And, and that's, that's with respect to the infimum, so let's write it down here. Just gonna copy and paste. Um, okay, this is kinda new, I have no idea what this is. Is this the copy? It doesn't even tell you. I can't remember if that's the copy symbol, this is for shortcut. The copy symbol, I'm, I'm, let me try. Paste, oh, it is. I swore I did this last time and it didn't work. Yeah. Yeah, but I, when I did it last time, it wasn't working, I don't know why, okay. I have the Le, the Lebesgue sum, the lower Lebesgue sum definition, it's the infimum of. The C K's. Skill issue, yeah, I guess it was. It was a skill issue. Okay. Yeah, I, I, okay, so from the, from like roughly what's going on in my head, it looks like it is working, I just need to like formalize it. Because of the infimum, it's working because of the infimum part. I think. Yeah, let's, let's work on this case by case, let's suppose. Yeah, it's, 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 it works, I, I think it does work, because if these numbers are. Um. If these numbers are, are real numbers, then there's an ordering to them, so let's just suppose for simplicity. Uh, C one is less than C two, and let's make this, um, let's make C one equal to C three cuz. They're not, they're not said to be distinct. They're not said to be distinct, and then. Just to have that case incorporated too, and let's make C four the biggest. We make C four the biggest, what happens? We have. Um. Based off this picture. E one. E one E one only contains C one. And so the lower Lebesgue sum, the infimum of this is basically going to be um. So there's two things I got to resolve here. There's there's the sum itself, which is it's based on the characteristic function. The sum itself is which is based on the characteristic function um uh the 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 the. And then also the infimum. So the reason why this is something else that I have to kind of think about is because uh C K may or may not be in E E sub K. Okay, that's another thing. Wait a minute. C sub K may not may or may not be in E sub K. So okay, here's what's happening. The the C sub K's have to be tied to E sub K. And here's here's why. Because these elements are real numbers. These are real numbers. And so so this was the definition. If X if um X was in E sub K, then it's equal to one. If X is not in E sub K, then it equals to zero. And so the idea here was um that it depends on on so X being in E sub K, should not be in the output of this means that this has to be C one if we're defining it this way. And this or this 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 one specifically doesn't have to be C one, but one of them in C K E E sub K has to be C one. But other elements in R in or in X can also be um can also map to C one. Okay, so if I were to combine, if I were to formalize this, then this would be um so C one is equal to C one times the characteristic function E sub K is equal to C C one. Oh, this is generalized as C K. What? This is still going through? Oh my. Oh my. All right, this is not good. How do I fix this? I thought I fixed it last time, but it's not fixed. Oh my. What the heck is that? Is that something on the O or on the N? Huh? I see. Interesting. So this is either going to so basically you're just multiplying the one or the zero. So you get either get C sub K um if X is in um E sub K or zero if X is not in E sub K. And so if if C sub K, if C sub K is if C sub K is not is in E sub K, then we get this E C sub K. If C sub K is not in E sub K, so if C sub K is not in E sub K, then we get zero. So C sub K has to be in E sub K. If we're gonna if we're just if we're gonna define the simple function like this. So it's I think it's implied in in here that C sub K is is contained in E sub K here. Okay. Um, okay, so with that said, um so these these are like this is basically how the function looks like. It's um have like these output constant functions and we have like a a set X. I have to draw like these like simple sets because I'm not trying to like go crazy here. So like there's like this set X. That's X. And then we have a partition of X. So maybe like this. And then we have um so it's not necessarily like in order like this. And so E one is and E three are the same and they're the smallest value or they're they're the lowest value. So we can have like a negative number here for E one uh for C one and C two C three. Um, this is C two. Wait a minute. Okay. This is like violating my this is violating this part. What is going on here? What in the search activity is this? I don't even know, man, to be honest. I'm trying to find out a justification for this. Um, so I'm basically navigating around this like function that we're working with, which is called the simple function. Um. Basically, a simple it's a simple function if your output is like a finite number of outputs. So in this case, we only have four. But I'm running into like weird cases um applying the infimum on the sum of simple functions or the applying the infimum on the simple function. Suppose. What's going on here? Okay, I'm gonna look at the Royden book real quick. This is what I saw last time. Okay, this is not what I remember or what I expected. I think what's happening here is that there is something that's implied in this that I'm not fully convinced of. Okay, the the issue here is are these distinct or not? That's the issue. Because it doesn't say they are. But if we're gonna write them like this, then um they had to be contained in the the um. Do they have to be contained in the corresponding E sub K? So the fact that each one so it's it is true that each C sub K is contained in some E E sub J. That part is true because of the the fact that X is in is a domain and E sub K is um or E sub one to E sub N is a partition, an S partition. But um it is possible to have more than one of the Cs in one of the Es. That is possible. And if that happens, then we have um we have this case. Okay. Let's just let's just try it. Doesn't hurt to try here. Okay, so for the finite case we have um so let's suppose let us suppose that both C two and C three are in E E three. No, 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 I can't do that because C one and C three are the same. Let's do C one, C two, C three are in E one. And then C C two doesn't contain any of the Cs. So let me write that down. And C or is contained in E um let's do E three. Okay, so let's see what happens. Then if I do the sum, it's the measure measure of E one times the infimum over E one. And E one contains C one, C two, and C three. And C one and C three are the smallest. So it And C one and C three are the smallest, so it just contains um C with a C one or C three doesn't really matter. Plus the measure of E two times um. Times um. Oh wait, I think I know what's going on here. Measure of E one times the infimum over E one. Just write it down. I'm running out of space. V one, and we'll write this down too. This is going to be C one. E one, plus C two. E two, plus C three. E three. C two. Probably put this in the bottom now. Cut. Cut. Aced. E two infimum over E two of, I should just copy this so I don't have to rewrite this. Plus mu E three infimum three. Less mu of E four. The infimum of E four. Okay, so since since um since C one, C two, C three are contained in E one. Um. And C four is contained in E three. This reduces to E one infimum one. C one's contained in E one, C two's contained in, okay, so this just becomes C one, E one. C two is containing E one and C three is containing E one. So this goes to zero. This goes to zero. And this goes to zero. Uh huh. What the? Okay. You take the infimum. It's just zero. Oh no, no, nothing, not zero. It's um, how do I define this? It was actually less than zero. Okay, this is not working. Because it's already not going to give me the sum that I want. Because I'm, I'm ready, I annihilated, I annihilated like so many terms. So it's probably it's, it will work if C K is contained in the character, in E sub K. It's for sure going to work for that case. Yeah, this is not good. I guess what I can do is I can just re-index them. So I can put C four into E four. I think the indexing is just the issue here, but the other issue here is if I have um, three terms that are the same or just even more than one term that's the same or, or two terms that are the same. Um, I don't count, I'm not able to count it twice. I won't be able to count it twice. Okay, I need to make a note of that. Okay, that's the issue that I'm, that's the main issue that I'm having here is how to count them again because the definition requires them to be counted again. So even if they're, even if C's, even if we get repeated terms, they need to be counted again. Because the sum here is going to count them again, right? The sum is going to be is a product of the measure times the H sub K value. So it's, look, it looks like these, these are tied to E. Each C sub K is tied to each E sub K, but I need to like make that confirmation. Because the way the definition is written, it's like you're just picking arbitrary disjoint sets in and um, in X. And there are these arbitrary values in, in zero to, to infinity. And then we write this simple function. I think that's the, I think that's the assumption here. I think the assumption is here. So there exists, so we, this is easy. It's, it's easy to show the existence of, of these sets. I'm not so sure how I can tie these constants um to to each uh, disjoint set. But I'll think about that another time or at least um. I'll give it some thought. Maybe I'll address it next stream. But I need some time to work on it. Okay. What's next on the agenda? All right, I'm going to transition to the video game. So if you were here for the, the math side, this, I appreciate your viewership. Um. I'll probably play for maybe an hour, an hour and a half. God, this is really bugging me. Molly, molly. And one of the issues of this particular book is like there is like a lot of subtleties in this book. Like a lot of non, like things that are not said that are implied, but you have to kind of know they're implied by the way it's written. So I think this is just one of those things. Let's see. Okay. But I think I made some, at least I made some good progress, I feel like. Once I figure this out, I feel like it's going to open the floodgates for the rest of this chapter, to be honest. But we'll see about that.